Good evening. A call to order the Monday, December 12th, 2022, 5:30 special meeting. The clerk will call the roll for attendance. Counselor Anderson Burgos. He's online. I can see him. Counselor Bartley.
Here.
Counselor Givner.
Here.
Counselor Jordan.
Here.
Counselor Malala Velez.
Here.
Counselor McGee here. Counselor McGivern.
Here.
Counselor Mercer Ambelet.
Here.
Counselor Poiolo.
Here.
Counselor Israel Rivera.
Here.
Counselor Jenny Rivera.
Here.
Counselor Tomlin.
Here.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I'm also here. Sorry. Excuse me.
That's scary.
So are we.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
The city of Hoyo.
And the city council.
So tonight, we have the tax classification. However, we have to take up the late file orders, which would be items one and two. So motion be.
Take a motion to take up late filed orders on order.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Late file is one that the council subsidizes revenue for the sewer budget, which is $24,919. And then two is that the council vote for the MRF for tax classification. Motion be suspend the rules.
And I don't number one, Mr. President, make a motion that we proceed to final action for the purpose of adopting the appropriating for the deficit on the recap sheet.
There's a second.
Second.
Okay. And then Counselor Bacon.
We just have to do the roll call thing because of being on Zoom?
Well, we're going to do roll calls anyways because we have to vote that way because special. But thank you, counselor. With that, I did, the mayor is here. The mayor has been very busy. 2:00 AM. So like to have the mayor come up. He wanted to give a discussion as to what's going on before we take our vote. So mayor, if you'd like to come on in. You got to jump over.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, honorable city councilors. So last year, when we met around this time to set the tax rate, I mentioned that next year is going to be our year where we can work together to better manage our municipal finances in a way that'll allow us to better navigate our municipal service needs and sustain a decent tax rate. We hit the ground running with a clear plan that has resulted in some good news, which I have to give credit to each and every one of you here tonight for being so extremely supportive. Some of that good news includes that the tax rate, the tax rate itself is going down. And depending on which shift you pick, it's not going to, it's, it's, it's not just going down by a little bit. Through the many options available to you to vote on, there is an opportunity to lower the rates for both the residential. Now, we're talking about the tax rate for both residential and commercial. To add to the good news, you don't have to use free cash or any reserves to reduce the levy amount. This means that your budget remains balanced. Not only is it balanced, we left $1.9 million on the table uncommitted and unappropriated. Even without the ARPA revenue replacement, the budget still continues to remain balanced. Now, if I was sitting where you are sitting currently, or for anybody that's watching from home, you might be asking, how do we do that? We were able to achieve this using a combination of factors outside our just normal budgeting practice. And this includes, number one, multiple years of new growth. Property values went up $12 billion in fiscal year '23 alone. Even as the value of our number one taxpayer in the city of Hoyoak, the Hoyoak mall went down. Additionally, we maintain conservative revenue estimates of local receipts. This means we budgeted for much less of what we anticipated to collect. As planned, we collected more than we budgeted, which will strengthen our free cash potential and allow us to better mitigate shortfalls and plan for and invest in our capital needs. Because, as I like to say from time to time, you get what you plan for. So where do we go from here? I can't stress to you enough how important right now is. In fact, I do think we are sitting in a moment in our city's history where your decision today on the tax rate can and will determine the trajectory of our city's future. Will we make a decision that feels good in the short term? Or will we make a decision that can set us up for some real success in the future as long as we stick to the plan? Any decision you make today with these favorable tax rate choices will result in a very modest increase in the average single-family home tax bill. And that is because the residential values have doubled in Hoyoak, have doubled in the past 20 years, currently just under $2 billion in value. Meanwhile, and this might surprise you just as much as it surprised me, commercial real estate has remained somewhat flat during that same time period. And during that time period, the commercial tax rate has continued to grow while their values remain stagnant. So we need to acknowledge what this really means. The only way we can achieve sustainable growth and stability to extent that I know is possible within the municipal boundaries of this city is by growing our commercial tax base. For that reason, we need to correct the course. Tonight, we have an opportunity to send a strong message to the business community, not just those that are here, but businesses across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and make a major step by lowering the commercial tax rate below its current rate and possibly even lower than the $40 rate. What is this going to mean for our residents? This is going to help them in the long run by shifting the tax burden off the residents in the future, creating a more equitable system for everybody, especially for our most vulnerable, like our seniors and those on fixed incomes. Sort of like how our earlier residents planned for the long run, things were benefiting from today, from, from today because of the sacrifices made at that time when they built the canals or when they, or when they made the decision to purchase back the dam. Although, while I acknowledge this is certainly the most difficult decision the council has to make every single year, I hope you'll consider my recommendation, which I won't not just give one because this is entirely up to you. This is your game. But consider my recommendation, which I must admit is indeed a very progressive decision to right the course, to help plan for and support a much more sustainable tax base and select the shift between 1.6300 and 1.6450. Or if that's not palatable, consider selecting a shift that gets commercial under the $40 mark and residential under the $19 rate. Whatever you do select, because the decision is ultimately yours, I'm happy to report to you and to the rest of the public that we're going to be all right. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, city councilors.
All right. So with that, the first item is item one, that was to take up and have final action tonight. Motion be receive, adopt, and pass the first reading under discussion. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, our auditor is here this evening, and the mayor informed me last, last week that a deficit, small deficit, does exist within the sewers. I believe it's 24,000 some odd dollars. And that deficit, according to DLS, after being identified by our outside auditors, according to DLS, DOR, needs to be appropriated on the recap sheet before we can take our, do our final, final vote or our final setting of the, the budget and setting of the, the tax rate itself. I would make a motion to allow the auditor to approach or the mayor if they want to address.
So motions allow the auditor or mayor to speak on this?
Second.
All those in favor.
I have a question. Before we spend all this time about whether or not we're already know we're going to give them the 25,000, do, does anybody have any questions about just giving the $25,000? I mean, this is a perfunctory vote. Why don't we just vote to do it? I mean, if there is questions, but they're going to hear and then they're going to say, we have to balance the account and we need the 25,000.
Just a question if you want, if someone has a question. So motion is to allow people have, if they have questions for the auditor or mayor, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Are there any questions for the auditor or mayor? Seeing no hands here, none online.
Make a motion to pass the first reading.
Counselor McGivern.
Under discussion, Mr. President. Counselor Jordan is correct. We do have to take this vote. It's not unusual to take a vote similar to this at this time of the middle of the year budget as we try to set the final tax rate, try to set the final budget in motion. I just, I will vote in favor of this because of all of that, but I will voice my opinion. It is wrong to use taxpayers' property tax, general fund budget tax dollars to pay for the sewers. The sewers should be paid by the rate, should be paid by the users and not by our, our property tax and other revenues that come into the general fund budget. But as I stated, that's symbolic, I guess. A no vote would not do us any good, so I will vote yes.
Anyone further? Seeing none, motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading. The clerk will call or vote yes. You're voting for the $24,919. Will this go in order? Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Counselor Bartley.
Yes.
Counselor Givner.
Yes.
Counselor Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Malala Velez.
Yes.
Counselor McGee, yes. Counselor McGivern.
Yes.
Counselor Mercer Ambelet.
Yes.
Counselor Poiolo.
Yes.
Counselor Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yes.
Counselor Bacon.
Yes.
Put your vote, you approve that one. With that, on to item number two, which is that the city council vote to set the MRF for fiscal year '23 tax classification. With that, motion would be to take up and have final action. Our discussion, Counselor.
Just a point of information, if I could.
Yep.
Just before we start getting into the nuts and bolts of this, the vote we just take, does that have an impact in any of these numbers? I'd ask that to either the assessors or to the auditor.
So to the auditor, because the mic is open to you.
That there will be no changes. That's included in the figures.
Doesn't change the tax levy?
It does not. I mean, it, it would have if you had voted against it, but I included that in the number originally.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further questions? Counselor Jordan.
You ready for motions?
Yep. So just let me explain it for those who haven't done this before. So we'll take three requests for motions to set the rate. I'll ask the counselor, Counselor Jordan was first to go. He'll say the rate. We'll say, make sure everyone's on the same page. Say the residential, commercial, that'll be the first one. And there'll be a second and a third, and that's where it'll stop. And then when we vote, we'll start from three, two, and one. So if three passes, you'll never get to two and one. If none of them pass, we go back and do three again. So any questions on it? It's kind of confusing. Go three, but then go backwards and then start over. I'll walk you through it. Don't worry. But I just wanted to say it first because it is first time.
That's good.
All right. So with that, first one was Counselor Jordan. Let me get my list out first. Counselor Jordan.
Okay, Mr. President. I'm going to propose a residential shift of 1.72. This would have a residential rate of $18.64 and a commercial rate of $40.67.
All right. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second.
So that is 1.72. That's the first one. Is there a second motion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yes, I'd like to put a shift in of 1.7050, which would be 1874 for residential and 4032 for commercial.
Second. Number three, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to submit a shift of 1.7150, please.
Second.
1.7150. 1.7150 would be 1867 and then 4056. So with that, we'll vote to motion three, which is Counselor Bacon first of the 1.7150. Any discussion before we go or just want to vote?
I'd like a discussion.
I have my hand, I have my hand up. Sorry.
So Counselor Bacon, and then we'll go around.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the reason for my recommendation for this rate is that it does give a slight reduction to the businesses along with the residents. And because no matter what rate that we choose, there will still be an increase in the actual tax bills of all involved. The goal with my motion is to keep the bill increase below $200 for the homeowners. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. So some, some residents are asking what the tax rate is now currently.
Oh, I'll read that. Get that sheet out. So current rate, good question for 2022. Residential is 19.26, commercial is 40.60.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Jordan.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. President. So this will be, hopefully I don't have to, unless there's questions about some of the figures, this will hopefully count for most all the motions. Some key points I wanted to put out for my colleagues. Number one is Hoyoak in western Massachusetts has the highest residential tax burden. We actually have the fourth highest. I did, it used to be absolutely the highest, but actually a couple of communities did go by us in the western part of the state. I extract that eastern part of the state. In particular, let's see here, we are at 21.4% of a single-family tax bill as a percentage of the per capita income of a Hoyoak resident. The only people now that are worse off than us is Barockton at 21.9 and New Bedford at 21.5. So that puts us right there. Oh, I'm sorry. And Lynn, how could I forget? Lynn at 23.3%. When you compare that to what the, and also the average bills are in some of our neighboring communities. Chickaby, average residential, single-family home tax bill, $3,819. Hoyoak, based on the rate that I had proposed at 4067, and this number gets bigger if you go more up the scale. That's at four, if we set it at $18.64, will be $4,404. So that is the average resident in Hoyoak is paying $600 more than a resident in Chickaby. Springfield, average residential, single-family home tax bill, $3,678. Hoyoak, again, 4,404. That's it, the rate I proposed. That number only gets bigger as you go up the chart. So the point is, you're paying $800 more for your, for your home in Hoyoak than you are in Springfield, and you're paying 600 more than if you're in Chickaby. Well, I don't need to tell anybody in this room that we represent people who are really taking it on the chin by this inflationary period that we have. We represent a poor community, and we need to start voting like that. I hear a great deal about progressivism. Progressivism isn't what I heard 10 minutes ago. That's not any progressive. I have listened in this room for years. People talk about trickle-down economics, that if we just give the business, the people, these big breaks, it's somehow going to trickle down to the little people. Didn't happen 30 years ago. It didn't happen 20 years ago. It didn't happen 10 years ago, and it won't happen now. So if you subscribe to trickle-down economics and give tax breaks and put it on the backs of people who are keeping body and soul together, then by all means, go ahead. Give these big commercial breaks and put it on the backs of our homeowners. That's not how I'm going to vote tonight. And here's the other thing that's foolish about that strategy. When you compare the average commercial tax bills, how much people pay in these neighboring communities to ours, yes, is our rate higher? No doubt. But our values are radically less. The actual average bills are between approximately $5,000 a year the last time I did this analysis. Okay? So if you go to a West Springfield, a Springfield, a Westfield, a Chickaby, their businesses are paying a lot more in actual money you put in an envelope and send down here. So this notion that if you go down on the rate, that, you know, you are on, on the homeowner here, or at least not radically increase the homeowner's bill, because there is no scenario here, by the way, that the homeowner bill goes actually down, even at my rate that I proposed to you, the homeowners are going up 4%. Commercial is going up a half of 1%. Is that fair? No. Okay. But it's the best we can do without increasing the commercial rate. This notion that we would go down to, you know, these rates where it's like $38 on business. Are you kidding me? That we would have rates on commercial, excuse me, on residential that would go up a tax bill 7.7%? That's what it would mean if we kept the residential rate the same today or slightly less. Who wants to send that out to residents that are already paying $600 and $800 more than neighboring communities? That's not right. And the only way ultimately, that I will say that if you really want to long-term help business in this community, we have to do more, and I, and I do give kudos, and I mentioned it earlier this week, about the marketing position and the other things to bring business here. And we need to control our budget, no question. But we need, as a gateway city, aid from the state. They need to change the paradigm here because we have high-exempt property that isn't paying any tax, and we had more that came off. We have a mall that has shifted $4 million in value. The budget didn't go down when their tax bill went down 4 million. Okay? So they, for all intents or purposes, their rate's been cut in half because their valuation's been cut in half. All right? They paid 8 million a year. They're paying 4 million now. That's a big difference. Okay? But to say we're going to lower it even more and put that on the homeowners, these people who are struggling with massive inflation on groceries. I showed in the report from the gas and electric the other day, natural gas is going up 32%. Electricity is going up 10%. Where do these people get this money? They don't. And that's what they're sending us here to city council to protect them. If I thought for one minute that if you give all these tax breaks to business on the, you know, in these out-of-town marijuana executives or the executives at Pyramid Corporation who are doing just fine getting their own bill reduced, okay? And I've already expressed my opinions about that. We have to represent and fight for these residents and support business. But if, like I said, if I thought that that was going to bring more here, I would support it. But it doesn't because we're already with a massive competitive advantage on tax bills. Reasons some businesses aren't coming here are for a variety of other reasons, not related to the tax bill, quite frankly, because if it was strictly about valuation and rates, they would be here because you're going to pay less in Hoyoak than you do any of these neighboring communities. So we have to do a better job attracting, but we need state aid so that we get out of this pickle where, by the way, if you compare our levy in Hoyoak compared to these other communities, our levy is radically less. We're not even taxing as much, okay? Than these other communities, but our rates are so much because we don't have a tax base. That's the problem. Okay? Because when you're in a poorer community of even lower home values on average, and that bears out with the exception of Springfield, our average home price in, in Hoyoak is 10% higher than Springfield, yet their bill, their bill is 20% less than ours, even though our home values are 10% more. That's a real competitive disadvantage. So that's why I honestly, counselors, my distinguished colleagues, I think we should not go up on the commercial rate. Quite frankly, you're not going to get that many extra dollars for the homeowners anyways by going up. But all things held equal, when the residential values go up 7.7%, all things held equal, their rate should go down 7.7%, right? But we need to generate some more taxes to pay this extra million in the levy. This rate still has them going up 4% and commercial only up a half of 1%. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. If, one of the most confusing votes we take every year is the question of shifting the tax burden from commercial to commercial industrial from residential property. It's a necessary vote in this city. It's not a very nice vote in any city. And property tax is by far the ugliest means of raising the revenues you need to provide the services you want to provide as a, as a city. Services that our residents and our businesses look forward to, especially our residents. We still pick up trash. Chickaby, you have to pay to get your trash picked up. Springfield, you have to pay to get your trash picked up. Our streets were piled pretty good in a small storm last night, but the DPW was on top of it. They maintain the streets, sidewalks. Our parks could, could use a few makeovers, but we have a lot of parks and we have a lot of, provide a lot of good services through the parks. Our police and fire are often taxed with big city problems in a small city setting. And yet they, they always respond as first, not just as first responders, but as, as public safety, as public safety departments themselves. And in our schools, although we pay a very small portion of schools, we do our best to make our contribution to education, which is the beginning of breaking the cycle of this community getting out of the poverty stigma and getting out of, and allowing, more important, our residents to break the poverty cycle and to find those good jobs that we all know can be done with good education and good search and, and good, good going forward. So if, if you listen to the argument about the residential average tax bills, it's apples and oranges when you compare us to Chickaby and Springfield. It's a whole different ballgame. It's a ratio game where there's a lot more homes, a lot more single-family homes, a lot more rental units, a lot more residents in both of those communities compared to Hoyoak. And when you listen to the argument that it's by doing something less than $40 for the commercial rate is giving business a break, you're missing the whole point of what property tax is about. The arguments, if you just look at our commercial property, industrial property as being the mall, being some large businesses in our industrial section, you're missing what Hoyoak is. Hoyoak is an industrial community, big and small, and the big picture is important to the residents as well as the, as well as the commercial industrial owners themselves. Most of us shop Hoyoak. We believe in it. Stop and shop, mom-and-pop stores, bodegas. We get our groceries in Hoyoak. If you raise or don't continue to help those business owners, they're just going to raise their prices and we're going to pay for this anyways because our grocery bills will go up. Many of us try to shop as much as possible for clothes. You know, whether we go to the mall, whether we go downtown, there's so many different boutiques up on North Hampton Street, a number of different boutiques that are there now in Hoyoak Sporting Goods and places like that to get things that we need. If you raise or don't help them with their tax bill, we're going to pay extra for what we buy there. The worst, and this is the one that I've always struggled with because we've, first of all, we, we don't pick this taxing scheme. No municipality in Massachusetts decides how they're going to raise taxes. The state picks it. The state doesn't want to deal with property tax because the state gets real, the state gets retail tax, the state gets all those hotel taxes, meal taxes, income tax, the ones that we don't think about. And yet, every day, we're paying those taxes. Our taxes, you know, whether it be our income tax, our federal government. Our taxes, whether it be our income tax, our federal government, our state government, when we, when we, you go out and have one beer, you're paying, 6.25% of that beer goes to the state. That's where the big tax dollars come out of your pocket. We need to make a scheme that makes it work, and this is, this is my argument that I've always struggled with, for new construction to make it possible, to make it, economically possible, to happen in Holyoke, because that's where we win, is new growth. We heard from our assessors, from our auditor, and this, the recap sheet and the assessors, our new growth figure this year is pitiful. What am I getting at? New construction. New construction is the same rate every community within Massachusetts. It costs the same to build a building in Holyoke and Chickaby and Springfield, the same amount. The materials are the same amount, the labor is the same amount, you know, the design might be a little bit different, it might, you know, but new construction is new construction. And when people look at the rate in Holyoke, when they think about building, their manufacturing building, their big wide building, they look at that rate and say, can, you know, can we afford that? It's cheaper for us to build in West Springfield. It's cheaper for us to build in Chickaby. It's cheaper for us to build in Springfield. We need to be competitive in the new construction rates, so that when someone builds, and what happens is, you, the assessors, and I'm not going to, you know, put words in their mouths, but when they look at a building, you know, under a new constructed building, it's pretty much the cost of what that building was, becomes the market value. That's where we lose, because we are not growing, and I think Counselordordane said that in part of his discussion. We are not growing. I will not and cannot vote for a commercial tax rate over $40. We need to get back into the market of attracting new business into this city and protecting the businesses that we have, because as residential homeowners, it's all a big picture, and if we don't do that, we're only kidding ourselves, we're hurting ourselves.
Anyone further? All right, Counsel Vacan.
Just briefly, I would just like to note for my colleagues that we will have one very large project in our city, which we know will come to fruition within the next year or two, and that will be taxed at the commercial rate. And as part of doing my due diligence, I talked to people who both live in Holyoke and have a small business in Holyoke as an example, and asked, so which would have a worse effect on you if your home rate goes up higher or your business rate goes higher? And this particular example I'm using was a small business person. And the response I got was, my home rate will affect me more than my business rate if it goes forward next year. So that's part of the due diligence that I did. The mall got its break on its value, so if the rate stays essentially the same, they're still getting their break, and the new construction that will come online understands what the tax rate is when they took the project, and they're still building the project, and regardless of what we determine the rate to be, they already understand what it is. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counsel Bartley?
Yeah, I just want to just to reiterate, my friend Linda, not only the building, they're expanding, so they actually went from four floors to five floors, so they expanded the project. And may I just add, because I always like to pat on the back, City Council, that's really the work that we did here, frankly, to make sure, and that's while, I mean, others weren't here, but this is good work that we did, those of us who were here, to ensure that this project paid the commercial rate. So that was part of the whole process, which some of us who were here ensured that that happened, and I think that's good, same way with Providence, same way with Mount Murray, now with the project that, on Holy Family Road, that the Word5 Council just referenced, and I know she's proud of it, and I'm very proud of it too, so we're pretty excited about that. But I just want to clarify that, in a small way, her very good point.
Okay. Counsel.
No, I'm also.
So with that, we'll go to the first, which is motion number three, which is a rate of 1,715, which then would be residential 18.74, commercial 40.32. Clerk of Colorado?
No, I don't think it's it.
Did I say that right?
Yep. Be 1867 residential and 4056.
I wrote it down wrong, I apologize.
Yep, no problem.
All right, thank you for the correction. So with that, I will call the rule, we'll go in alphabetical order. If you vote yes, you're accepting that. If you vote no, you're voting against. Counselor Anderson Burgos.
No.
Counselor Bartley.
Yes.
Counselor Gibner.
No.
Counselordordane.
Yes.
Counselor Malala Velez.
No.
Counselor McGee, no. Counselor McGivern.
No.
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
No.
Counselor Puelo.
Yes.
Counselor Israel Rivera.
No.
Counselor Jenny Rivera.
No.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yes.
Counselor Vacan.
Yes.
Five votes for that. That does not pass. Next would be number two, which is 1.7050. Any questions on that?
Yeah, the rate would be 1874 and 4032.
Correct.
And this is the one proposed by Counsel Tomlin.
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
No.
Counselor Bartley.
Yes.
Counselor Gibner.
No.
Counselordordane.
Yes.
Counselor Malala Velez.
No.
Counselor McGee, yes. Counselor McGivern.
No.
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
No.
Counselor Puelo.
Yes.
Counselor Israel Rivera.
No.
Counselor Jenny Rivera.
No.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yes.
Counselor Vacan.
Yes.
At six, does not pass. Now on to motion one, which was the first one, which was 1.72, which would give you 1864 and then 4067. Counselor Anderson Burgos.
No.
Counselor Bartley.
Yes.
Counselor Gibner.
No.
Counselordordane.
Yes.
Counselor Malala Velez.
No.
Counselor McGee, no. Counselor McGivern.
No.
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
No.
Counselor Puelo.
Yes.
Counselor Israel Rivera.
No.
Counselor Jenny Rivera.
No.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yes.
Counselor Vacan.
Yes.
Five votes. All right, so we'll go back. Counselor Malala Velez was first. Give me one second to, motion one.
Motion, 1.6950.
I didn't hear that, 1,1?
1.6950.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
And that was seconded, so... And that was 1,6950, which represents 1881 and then 4008. Motion two, Counselor Gibner.
I'd like to make a motion for 1.69.
1.69, is there a second?
Second.
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 1.69 would represent 1885 and 3997. Is there a third? Counselor McGivern.
A motion for 1.68.
1.68, is there a second?
Second.
1.68 would represent 1892 and then 3973. That would be the 1.68 is first, because we go back in order, so this would be, starting with Counsel McGivern's, which is 1.68, which represented the 1892 and then 3973. Counselor Anderson Burgos.
No.
Hold on, first, before we go, just go to votes. People just made these new round of motions. Does anybody want to say why we should vote for these? Or is...
Okay, so Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd love to talk. And I won't repeat what I said, but for all the things I said, the reason I chose this, and this is even a little bit higher than what I thought we could get to this evening, but it seems to be obvious that it'd be very difficult to get to that point of where we can put ourselves in position to be a new-growth community attractive to new business that would help us all in the long run. You heard the arguments after I talked a few minutes ago about a person who owns a home and a person who owns a business. Of course, the impact is on their home is different, because on their business, they can raise what they're selling, and therefore it offsets the increase on the commercial property itself, and the homeowner still has to pay that raise. So they're going to get us one way or the other. I'd rather, you know, do something which is, you know, 25, 50 bucks extra a quarter that, you know, will allow us to attract new business, and in the long run, and we have some good examples of some of the new construction that's happening, with very deep pockets, the hospital that's going up to replace the buildings that we knew was the geriatric authority, on North Hampton Street, the new building which is, looks like it's getting ready to open, I'm not too sure they have a tenant yet, but there's a second building going up there. But we need to replace a lot of buildings that are vacant. We need to build not just off of 91, not just up in certain neighborhoods, but we need to build new construction across the board, across the city. And that's when we become a healthier community, and that's why I think we need to send a message with the lowest possible SIP rate we have. This one, if you looked at that, those rates that the, that the assessors gave us during the hearing, this one would at least get us off of being number one highest rate within the Commonwealth for SIP, and that's why I proposed the 1.6800.
Counselordordane.
Yep. So I'm just going to make a couple observations here. I'm really intrigued, you know, this council purports itself again to be progressive. I guess progressive means take it from the business, give them these breaks, put it on the backs of the people who can least afford it, and that's what this city council apparently represents. Obviously, I see I'm in the minority view, that's okay, won't be the first time, won't be the last, but I do think there's a dichotomy of what we're calling progressive in this town, because these folks, we have played this game, I have watched this movie for 30 years of allegedly we're going to go down and go down and go down, and where is all this business that came from it? They already have among the lowest bills in the area, so if your theory meant anything, we would have already seen it. Doesn't, doesn't work. So you pay less in Holyoke, because again, they'll talk about this fake argument about the rate, when it's compared to the values. The values here are way less. It's the only reason that rate is higher than neighboring communities. So it's, give these folks, you know, like the mall and these marijuana people and these other big businesses in town, give them this great tax break and put this on the homeowners and the people who can least afford it. We've had double, two-family homes last year went up 18%. So if the rate goes up, as is being proposed on the table, I want everybody at home to understand, the residential is going to go up 5.4%, and commercial's going to go down 1%. That's fair, that's progressive, right? So you're going to pay an extra $227, and the commercial's going to pay 239, and apparently all this business is going to be, at some point down the road, seniors, who, apparently this is for seniors, good Lord willing, I hope they're alive to see these breaks that allegedly they're going to get. Don't worry about it, you know, your social security increase that you're getting, just send it to City Hall, because you're going to go up 5.4% and the business is going to pay one, but some point date in the future, it hasn't happened in the last 30 years, maybe in the next 30 years if you're here to see it, you're going to get a tax break. These arguments don't even make sense. And so, you know, again, it is bad enough that one goes up almost nothing and the other goes up four. Is there any fairness in how we tax in this city? Any fairness? To have one group go up 5.4% and have the other group to go down one, that's considered fair, that's progressive. Okay?
It's not, it has nothing to do with...
Counselor, no, we're not doing this. We're just setting a rate.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Stop, one at a time, one at a time.
No, I'm sorry, my phone, my computer was, the mic wasn't off.
Counselor Gibner.
That's, that's rich. Thank you, Mr. President. As I look at all these numbers for the first time ever, I appreciate the complexity and everything that everyone goes through to figure this out. I have a lot of respect for our Holyoke homeowners, as I is one. I also have a lot of respect for the businesses that we are trying to attract, those that we are trying to keep, and those that, you know, are even just thinking about coming in or on the fence. I'm hearing a lot about fairness and arguments. I haven't heard a lot of arguments, so I don't know where they're coming from. We can't compare ourselves to Springfield, they have 156,000 people, we do not, so I think that's not a really fair comparison. Chickaby is a different place, and I don't think we need to compare ourselves to them either. I know we need more businesses in our city. I know we have the highest commercial tax rate in the state, and I think that's definitely an issue for us. I would like to see us to get, get under $40 for commercial. Hopefully, we can attract more businesses and get that number down over time. Hopefully, there'll be more businesses to offset the property taxes onto. I don't think it's very fair to blame our increasing home values on the tax rate, because it's not something we have a lot of control over, however, I think it's something we sort of want but sort of don't want, like, we want our property values to go up, but we don't want to pay more in taxes, so I understand that. I do like being able to vote for a tax rate that is essentially slightly less, even though our bills are going to be more. I understand that my property value went up, and therefore my taxes are going to go up, but that doesn't mean that my tax rate went up. So I think it's really important that people understand that as their home value goes up, their taxes are going to go up. I don't think that's a secret, and I think as a city, we need to do our best to lower things on both sides. So it looks like the rate itself will be lowered for businesses and homeowners, although their bills will go up, and I don't think we can get away from that. Like, the world's changing, it's growing, our houses are never going to, hopefully, they're not going to just, you know, fall right back down into a ditch and have no value. But this is, you know, one year, and it's a hard year, it's been a couple hard years, so I think we have to do our best with what we have. I think compromising and not going so low that the burden is very high on homeowners is good. I don't think that adding $20 a month to a tax bill for a homeowner is the worst thing on the planet. I mean, a lot of people do other things with their money, and, you know, this is an investment. You live there, you have to pay for services. We have shortages in staff in our community, we have departments that need more, you know, support. We could be doing better if we had more support in our departments, so, yeah, I think, I think it's okay to vote for a 1.69 tax rate. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counsel Rivera. Oh. Sorry about that. Actually, hold on, Counsel Rivera, Counsel Murphy Rambeletti, I do apologize. I saw your hand, but...
It's all good. I'm going to keep it brief, because the, there's been a lot of things, especially what Counselor McGivern was saying is a lot of what I've been thinking. I don't believe that we, I do believe that we should have our commercial tax rate go down below $40. This is my first time setting the tax rate and being a part of this meeting, but this is not my first time watching these meetings. I have watched these meetings for about the last decade, and I've seen the same thing, I've seen the same trajectory. I'm not on the council to continue to do the same thing, and I don't want to play into this narrative that if we vote for a tax rate... that if we vote for a tax rate that lowers the business tax under forty dollars, that we somehow don't care about the taxpayers of Holyoke and the residents of Holyoke. I'm very, very, very tired of that narrative. And I just am, am really feeling strongly that this is a long-term thing that we should all be thinking about. I've seen us put the shift on the businesses for years, and the commercial values have not gone up in like twenty years, residential values continue to go up. I think the three that are proposed here are all reasonable, and bring the rate down, again, the rate, your bill is unfortunately not going to go down, but we need people to understand that this is about the tax rate. And both, all three of these options, bring the rate down for businesses and bring the rate down for residential, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Rivera.
So, for me, like Counselor Murphy Rambeletti mentioned, this is my first time partaking in this, this tax rate setting, right? At the moment, it's more about, for me, listening, right, and soaking in as much as I can so that I can make an informed decision. Ultimately, I agree with a lot of what Counselor Jordan has said too as well, with regards to not raising residential rates. There are a lot of different factors that are not accounted for right now that are gonna be being, I mean, pretty much, there are different utilities that are gonna be raised within the next few months or so, there are a lot of different things that are gonna go up that'll impact the average homeowner or person that lives in the community overall. But for me, I don't believe in trickle-down economics either, that doesn't make sense to me. But at the end of the day, we, like Counselor Murphy Rambeletti mentioned, we've been doing the same thing for a while, we've been taxing commercial at a higher rate than normal throughout the state, and it hasn't changed anything. So for me, it's more or less trying to do something different and fall in line with what, I don't wanna say fall in line with the mayor, because that's not how I do it, but at the end of the day, we're all a team, right, we're all supposed to work together. And I kinda wanna believe and have faith that the approach that they're taking is an approach that is gonna help the community, not only now, but in the long term. Holyoke is not just now, Holyoke is everlasting, right? Holyoke is still here even a hundred years later. So every decision you make now impacts Holyoke, whether it's this year or a hundred years from now. So for me, in my decision-making here, because I almost voted for the other one, the one that Counselor Tallman put in, but at the end of the day, it's just, it's my first time.
Counselor Jordan, then Counselor Bacon.
Right. And again, for the newer counselors, I do appreciate, this is a difficult thing, there's a lot of numbers thrown out there, but just think of this, the statement is made, gee, residential values have been going up, and their rates are going up. What does that result in? That's bills that are much, much higher. Just watch what has happened to average residential tax bills over the last eight, nine years in particular. I mean, it has gone up like thirty-five, forty percent. It's really, really significant, these average bills. I talked about this, obviously people know I was pretty outspoken against the override in twenty nineteen, that would've been another seven percent, that ended up not happening, public spoke pretty loud and clear on that, they couldn't afford more. Well, when your value goes up seven point seven, again, all things held equal, your rate is supposed to come down seven point seven to produce the same amount of taxes. But their, their bill here, even with reducing this, is still gonna go up four percent, five percent if some of these ones that are proposed here. On the average commercial value, the point was made, and I agree with this point, values haven't gone up, they've stayed constant, okay? And yet, and the rates, so we've had stability in the bills. That's a good thing, over a long period of time. Residential hasn't enjoyed stability in their bills, they've seen rapid increase. And these are families, they don't have an ability to, you know, and believe me, I'm not for more taxes on anybody, I'm for cutting the budget, living by our means, making sure we're getting fair state aid, which we're not, by the way, we're not, compared to our cost, I have an order coming in on that in the near future. So this whole property tax system, totally agree with Counselor McGivern, this is rigged against communities like Holyoke, this is a terrible position to be in, this doesn't work for us, it works for suburbia, it doesn't work for Holyoke. But nevertheless, it's the deck of cards we're dealt, and we have to do it in such a way as equitable as possible, and that means everybody has to go up a little bit if we're gonna go up on the levy. What I'm suggesting to you counselors is, it's not right to say, we're gonna go up five point four percent on the residence and we're gonna go negative one percent on the commercial, that shifting is not right. Especially now, at a time when there's so much inflationary pressure on folks. So I would encourage to either come back to Counselor Tallman's as a compromise, or we came within one vote of the Counselor Tallman proposal, okay? Maybe Counselor Rivera, you think about that, or others, we had, we had six, not seven. So some of these are just too imbalanced, in my opinion. So I leave you with that, thank you.
Hold on, Counselor Bacon, for those who are here for the six-thirty public safety meeting, right now, we're doing tax classification, when we're done here, we'll go into that meeting, so if you're here for that, just to give you the heads up. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll be brief, but I just wanna advocate for the people who have lived here all their lives, they bought their home, they paid their home off, many of them have become widowed, or they're a couple that's retired and they're on a fixed income. And between all of the inflationary effects of food, medicine, energy, gas for the car, and the sewer rate, to add a further tax burden on them is pushing them to a place where they can't afford to live in their paid-off home. I also know people that are working two jobs to keep their home, because they're not in a high-income bracket, maybe they're certified nurse's aide, working in an assisted living facility or something like that, and they're working two jobs so they can keep their house. And so I'm thinking ahead for those people, and you can say, oh, thirty or forty dollars a month isn't that much, but every time we say that on all of these various issues, by the time you get done, it's a multiplier effect, and it turns into big money for people with a fixed income. So I would just ask folks to consider that as well, and I also voted for Counselor Tallman's rate as a compromise. Thank you.
Counselor Tallman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, this is a difficult thing, I really appreciate the new counselors here and looking at everything.
Gotta keep the doors open, though, gotta keep the doors...
This is a difficult thing that we do every year, I've done this several years, I really respect Counselor Jordan and Counselor McGivern's thoughts on this. My big thing is with, with the commercial properties, they've been stagnant, as Counselor Jordan stated, and over the years, the residential rate has increased, and even if you bring that down, that rate down, the tax rate, you know, you're talking two, three hundred dollars more for a resident, and that's, that's a lot of money for somebody that's, that's struggling, somebody that's in a fixed income, somebody that's deciding whether they're gonna buy their medicines, they're gonna have food, they're barely getting by paying their, their taxes and, and their household expenses, and with everything else going up. It is a difficult thing for us to do, I mean, I just wanna remind people that if we had a single tax rate, like, some communities would be like twenty-three dollars and sixty-five cents for everybody. And my big thing is that we have to get more businesses in here, and I understand we have to lower that rate for the business community, but what happens if we keep on lowering that rate for them and we don't have the businesses come in? Who picks up the tab? And it's, it's the residents, we have seventy-seven percent of the people that are paying the taxes, that own properties here, that are paying, putting most of the bill, and we do have a lot in Holyoke, we do get a lot of services in Holyoke that a lot of communities don't have. And we're not a West Springfield or a Chickaby that has several commercial properties that help pay the bills. So it's important to try to, to get something in the middle, some kind of compromise, so we do have a rate that is comfortable with business community, and we have some new properties coming online, hopefully we have a better increase yes year, next year, and next two years, in the values of the commercial properties. But it's important that we have to, we have to remember that there's a lot of people out there that are struggling, there's a lot of people that are hurting that have a difficult time getting by, so any of these three rates, it's gonna be difficult for me to, to vote for, but hopefully we can, we can get through this and maybe have something equitable that everybody on this council can agree on. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Jenny, I'd like, I'd like to go out to eat, maybe once a week if we're lucky, sometimes twice if there's something special going on, and all of the examples of the cost of living going up, gas for delivery, product delivery, gas and electric, electrical rates, heat, air conditioning, water, sewer, all our bills have gone up. We go out to eat, we sometimes order at the certain restaurant the same thing we ordered the week before. Is the bill the same as the week before or two months ago? Not even close. It's up twenty, twenty-five, thirty dollars. If you vote to protect, as some people are saying, the residential's rate and the residential's increase out of their pocket, it's still gonna come out of their pockets when they shop, because the business owner is just gonna raise their rates, whether they're a restaurant, whether they're Stop &amp; Shop, they will just raise their rate and raise their rate. And aren't we hurting people more? Isn't that gonna be more money out of their wallet and pocketbooks than if it's a one-time, you know, quarterly out of their pocketbook and out of their wallet, in doing something where we can protect the new construction, protect the rehabbing of old buildings? There's a building, we heard a great proposal in here last year, earlier this year, about the rehabbing of the church on Pleasant and Handin Street. It's not happening. Banks aren't gonna finance it. We need to protect rehabbing, new construction, and new business to protect the residential homeowner and to enhance their income by making this a solid and more profitable city itself. We're not, any of these proposals here are not giving business people a break, they're still paying some of the highest rates in the Commonwealth. We're just trying to find some middle ground where at the same time, we can go out and market this city and say, we want your business, we want your jobs, we want you, we want you to make a profit in the city of Holyoke, because then we all win with new growth, we all win with the better, more enhanced living that we all, we are all looking for. That's why I cannot vote for something that's forty dollars or above, even my proposal is far higher than I thought I'd be voting for this evening, but I consider it a compromise, and I ask everybody to look at that and think about what I'm saying. It's the big picture we're voting on, not just one picture, not just homeowners. By voting for business, you're voting for homeowners.
Counselor Malo Valles.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I remember meeting with Tanya a couple months ago, and kinda going a little bit how we set the tax rate, and I remember from that moment, I was like, oh, we need to fix this, and so I agree with Counselor McGivern and Counselor Jordan, in that this is not, these rates are not meant for us, like, Holyoke is a very unique city, Holyoke is in a very unique place, and we really don't have much of a choice, it seems like, really, because either way, someone seems to be getting screwed over, right, in this, in any of these scenarios. I'm coming from, I don't run a home, so I'm coming from a place as a renter, and my belief is, you know, I went with one point six nine five zero, because whichever rate goes here is, seems to me that rent is gonna be going up pretty soon. I'm looking for an apartment now, rents are over a thousand dollars for a one-bedroom, that's an issue, that's a problem. So we have renters here, and also that are also paying into this tax burden. But with that said, it would help if we also had job opportunities in our city, if we had more opportunities for people to actually make money, have some sort of income as well. So I went with a one point six nine five zero for that reason, it brings it, it brings it low on the, on the commercial side, send a message saying we are getting lower, but at the same time, we can't put all the burden on the residential as well. So that's why I think one point six nine is a good, one point six nine five zero is a good medium. Thank you.
Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, the point was made also about the shifting of the burden. If you're commercial, like, the example of Stop &amp; Shop was used, I'm glad, that's a great example, right? So Stop &amp; Shop, they get their bill, whatever it is, it'll be lower, here it appears, they can still go up, does that, does anybody think for a moment, they don't go up on a gallon of milk or the, or their food on the shelves? Boy, it hasn't stopped them so far, nationally, I think groceries are up for about fifteen percent. Seniors of Holyoke, can you just walk down Social Security office and say, hey, can I get an extra fifteen percent because groceries are up fifteen? They have an ability to pass these costs through. Seniors, the working poor of this community do not have that ability to walk into their boss and say, hey, city council went up five point four percent last night, hey, boss, can you throw a little extra, you know, an extra twenty, a twenty spot in the check next week? It doesn't work that way. The whole dynamic is totally different, and that's why you have to consider ability to pay, that's a factor here, okay? Yes, if I had a magic wand, I'd make every, you know, we would need less money to spend, and we would have a lower budget, and everything would be great, but we don't, it's the deck of cards we're dealt, and so the question becomes, we, if we have to have increases, are we fairly distributing the increases, and are we also considering the ability to pay? That's why, you know, when you think about a Counselor Tallman compromise, that's way more than I even would wanna do, but if that's the best we can do, I understand. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern. On the motion?
So the homeowner goes up to his boss and says, I need an extra twenty, forty bucks because the food prices have gone up, and the boss said, well, commercial industrial taxes have gone up and I need to lay a few people off. Two sides of the story, it's a big picture you have to look at, not just one way. Take the blinders off and look at what's best for everybody collectively, no matter what we do, we're gonna be wrong, no matter what we do, someone's gonna be hurt, someone's gonna be paying more, we can't control that, the state controls that, they force us to do this. But we need to continue to provide services, and we need to try to make this a stronger, healthier community to grow new business, to grow new industry.
So with that, motion number three, so Counselor McGivern, was one point six eight. I'll call the roll.
And those, you say what the rates are, please?
So with that, if you do that, residential is eighteen ninety-two, commercial is thirty-nine seventy-three. Counselor Anderson Burgos. Counselor Bartley.
No.
Counselor Givner.
Yes.
Counselor Jordan.
No.
Counselor Malo Valles.
No.
Counselor McGee, no. Counselor McGivern.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Yes.
Counselor Puelo.
No.
Counselor Rivera.
No.
What was that?
No.
No. Counselor Rivera, Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Tallman.
No.
Counselor Bacon.
No.
Four votes, that does not pass. Motion number two was one point six nine, that would represent eighteen eighty-five residential, thirty-nine ninety-seven commercial. Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Counselor Bartley.
No.
Counselor Givner.
Yes.
Counselor Jordan.
No.
Counselor Malo Valles.
Yes.
Counselor McGee, no.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Yes.
Counselor Puelo.
No.
Counselor Israel Rivera.
No.
Counselor Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Tallman.
No.
Counselor Bacon.
No.
Six votes, that does not pass. To number one, which was one point six nine five zero, that'd be eighteen eighty-one residential, forty zero eight for commercial. Anderson Burgos. Counselor Bartley.
No.
Counselor Givner. Counselor Jordan.
No.
Counselor Malo Valles.
Yes.
Counselor McGee, no.
Counselor McGivern.
No.
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
No.
Counselor Puelo.
No.
Counselor Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Tallman.
No.
Counselor Bacon.
No.
Three.
I'd like to go back to the Tallman compromise.
Second.
Of, uh...
Yep, let me get there. Give me a second.
Yep.
Motion number one. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Jordan.
1.705, uh, which would be the 1874 and the 4032.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
I'd like to make a second motion.
Second motion, Counselor Malala Velez.
1.7.
1.7, is there a second?
Second.
President, if I could?
Yeah, Counselor McGivern, just give me a second. Just trying to catch up here. Counselor McGivern?
1.6850.
1.6850, is there a second?
Second. Second.
Okay. All right. So for Counselor McGivern, which is number three, the 1.6850 is 1888, 3985. Call the roll, if you vote for that one. Uh, Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Counselor Bartley?
No.
Counselor Gibner?
Yes.
Counselor Jordan?
No.
Counselor Malala Velez?
No.
Counselor McGee, no. Counselor McGivern?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy-Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Counselor Puelo?
No.
Counselor Israel Rivera?
No.
Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Tallman?
No.
Counselor Bacon?
No.
It's five votes. Does not pass. Motion number two is 1.7. 1.7 would represent 1878 and 4020 for commercial. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
No.
Counselor Bartley?
No.
Counselor Gibner?
No.
Counselor Jordan?
No.
Counselor Malala Velez?
Yes.
Counselor McGee, no. Counselor McGivern?
No.
Counselor Murphy-Rumbelletti?
No.
Counselor Puelo?
No.
Counselor Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Tallman?
No.
Counselor Bacon?
No.
Three votes. Number one goes back to 1.7050, which is in 1874 and 4032.
And this was the one from Counselor Tallman?
Yes. So, Counselor Anderson Burgos?
No.
Counselor Bartley?
Yes.
Counselor Gibner?
No.
Counselor Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Malala Velez?
No.
Counselor McGee, yes. Counselor McGivern?
No.
Counselor Murphy-Rumbelletti?
No.
Counselor Puelo?
Yes.
Counselor Israel Rivera?
No.
Counselor Jenny Rivera?
No.
Counselor Tallman?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
That's six votes.
President, would you?
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yes, can, I'd like to reconsider, um, Counselor Gibner's, uh, 1.69.
Second.
Hold on one second.
Which is 18.85 and then commercial 39.97.
Mr. President? Give me one second. Counselor Jordan?
Okay, uh, political realism here. I'm gonna go with the one from Counselor Maldonado-Velez, a 1.7. That's one notch on, from Counselor Tallman, so if there's a second for that.
A second.
That's, that was seconded. Okay, and then is there a third one? Third. That, what? Oh, no, that, that, never mind. Counselor Gibner?
I'll put in, um, 1.685.
1.685. Is there a second?
Second.
Let me just write those down. So, third one goes first.
The President?
Wait, Counselor?
I second the, uh, Counselor Gibner's motion because it's the only motion right now under $40. It's the one that I think at least, if no other reason, the perception, but as I've been stating all evening, of getting the rate under, under $40 for commercial to help market the, uh, the city better and the new construction rates a little better.
Okay? So with that, we'll go to motion number three, which is the 16850, which represents 1888 and 3985. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
No.
Counselor Bartley?
No.
Counselor Gibner?
Yes.
Counselor Jordan?
No.
Counselor Malala Velez?
No.
Counselor McGee, no. Counselor McGivern?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy-Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Counselor Puelo?
No.
Counselor Israel Rivera?
No.
Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Tallman?
No.
Counselor Bacon?
No.
That's five votes. Motion two was the 1.7.
This is the one from Counselor Maldonado-Velez.
So 1878, 4020.
Yep.
All right. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
No.
Counselor, Counselor Bartley?
No.
Counselor Gibner?
No.
Counselor Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Malala Velez?
Yes.
Counselor McGee, yes. Counselor McGivern?
No.
Counselor Murphy-Rumbelletti?
No.
Counselor Puelo?
No.
Counselor Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Tallman?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
That's seven votes. Where you vote, you approve 1.7, which is 1878 residential, 4020 for commercial.
That was easy.
Can we do a quick check of calendars?
For Counsel, Counselor McGivern?
Can we do a quick check of our calendars?
Yes.
In case the mayor exercises the veto.
We can. But, as he said...
Well, if he doesn't want the bills to go out...
That's right, they have to go out, right?
That's it.
All right.
We're on record as the bills going out, Joe.
We gotta sign.
Now we check our calendars. You want a motion to adjourn?
They can, they can stuff the envelopes. Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We stand adjourned.